And everyone, it is six oh eight. Uh, welcome to the September twenty-six, two thousand twenty-four planning zoning meeting. Uh, let's call it a order, please.
Uh, yes, it's gonna be Ishmael Harris.
Here.
Ashley Henson, she's not here. Uh, David Barrow.
Here.
Gary Moss.
Here.
Jordan Scott.
Here.
Patrice Parsons is also not here. Uh, Keith Alborn.
Here.
And Joshua Bingaman.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, on to item two, citizen comments. Do we have anyone that's gonna speak right now? Are we waiting on the agenda item? All right, we're gonna move forward with that. On to item three A, individual items for consideration. Consider action to approve minute meetings, meeting minutes from August twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-four, planning zoning commission meeting. Alondra, or you got anything for that? No? Okay, can we get a motion on that, please?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes.
We have a motion? We have a motion and a second. Alondra, you get who that is?
Yes.
All right, can we call for roll, please?
Yes, Ishmael Harris.
Yes.
David Barrow.
Yes.
Gary Moss.
Yes.
Jordan Scott.
Yes.
Uh, Keith Alborn.
Yes.
And Joshua Bingaman.
Yes.
All right, let the motion see that it passed unanimous. Thank you. All right, on to item three B. Consider action to approve the vacation of the Valverde, section one, phase one and two lots fifty-two and seventy-one, block C, final plat being one point three-three acres in section S eight twelve, one, uh, eight, S eight-two-one-two, Valverde, section one, phase one and two, located west of FM nine-six-nine, within the city limits of Bastrop, Texas, as shown in Exhibit A. Ms. Kennedy?
Good evening, Commissioner. So, the first item that we have for you tonight is in the Valverde subdivision, as our chair had stated. This is specifically for two lots. It is a vacation of two lots, seventy-one and fifty-two. You can see them here. It's this large drainage slash open space lot, as well as this small lot. The reason for the vacation is when they originally did the plat, they made a mistake and they put a ten-foot P U E on the wrong side of the lot. It was meant to go on Lot seventy-one. They put it on Lot fifty-two instead, which effectively makes this a very tiny and almost unbuildable lot with a ten-foot P U E on, on, on the side. For title purposes, um, their, um, their titular had requested that they vacate the two lots and then go back and plat them. So, they, tonight, they are requesting the vacation of these two lots, and they will come back later with a minor plat. Sorry, any questions on this one?
Make a motion to approve?
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Can we call for roll, please? Did you get who that was?
Uh, yes, it was Gary and Keith.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, Ishmael Harris.
Yes.
David Barrow.
Yes.
Gary Moss.
Yes.
Jordan Scott.
Yes.
Keith Alborn.
Yes.
Joshua Bingaman.
Yes.
Thank you.
Let the record say it passed unanimously. Okay, on to item three C. I will need to recuse myself from this item, and Vice Chair Barrow will be taking over.
Thank you very much. Um, item three C. Conduct a public hearing and consider action on a recommendation for the zoning concept scheme, changing the zoning of two acres out of building block one-ten, east of Water Street, located east of Highway ninety-five, within the city of Bastrop, from P five core to P three residential, as shown in Attachment one. Kennedy?
Thank you. So, this next item that we have tonight is a zoning concept scheme. The address is eleven oh one S H ninety-five. You can see here, it is the highlighted lot at the corner of ninety-five and Spring Street. Sorry, I'll have to bear with me. So, the proposal is to downzone this lot. It is currently P five commercial, and they're wanting it to be P three residential. You can see here the future land use map for this area. It is currently designated to be neighborhood commercial, but it is adjacent to rural residential. There is gonna be two lots for rezoned tonight. The lots to the far right-hand side will be second, and they're essentially trying to re- rezone both down to P three. The reasoning being, this property has been in their family for a very long time, and they want to keep it in their family for a longer time, and they're wanting to keep it as a residential use. The only proposed development that they have on this current, I believe it is this current law, is potentially down the line, a single-family home, just for their personal residence. Notification was sent out to the twenty surrounding property owners within three hundred feet of the development. Their response is that we received four in favor for this, um, downzone. Any questions on this one?
I'll make a motion.
So, we have to have a public hearing first, and we do have citizen comments on this one.
Never mind.
May I open this up for the public hearing, please?
Yes, please.
Outstanding. Um, so, each speaker, as you come up, please state your name and your address as well, and we will start with Vaness Johnson. Ms. Vaness, thank you very much. Please come forward.
Uh, my name is Vaness Johnson. My address is thirty-six fifty-one Columbus Avenue, New Orleans, Louisiana. Um, I was born and raised on that piece of property adjacent to the one we are talking about, and the thing is that I intend on coming back here one day. I'd like to have a homestead here, but with the property now, it seems like we're so busy paying taxes and keeping things in the ru-, you know, out of the red, that it's getting impossible for us to dream like that, me to dream like that. So, what is happening is the taxes are overshadowing what we can afford, and that's why I know, I'm not blaming anybody, but we did have family members that let things get out of hand and didn't know what they were doing. But right now, we know what we're doing, so what we're going to do is try to get it rezoned, and in the future, I would intend on putting a house there, so it'll be residential. So, I appreciate y'all, um, listening to me, and thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. Um, next up will be Carol Reynolds. Would you come forward, please? State your name and your address for us, please.
So, uh, my name is Carol Reynolds. My husband and I own seventeen oh six and seventeen twelve Farm Street, and our family owns seventeen oh eight. We're the properties adjacent to both of these properties, uh, across on the Farm Street side. And, um, I just wanted to say that, uh, we're, we're in support of a residential use. That's what it's always been. It was not an intentional act on the part of the family to have anything changed like that, and we're in support of whatever they think is most appropriate for their lots. So, that's all.
Thank you very much for your time. Next up will be Kendrick Williams. Could you come forward, please, sir?
Good evening, Commissioner. My name is Kendrick Williams. I live at eleven oh five CP Johnson Lane. That's on the eastern side of the edge of this property. I'm gonna kinda just cut to the chase, 'cause I got way more than three minutes worth of material, so, um, the mission of Bastrop, Texas, as I'm sure you all know, is to continuously strive to provide innovative and proactive services that enhance our authentic way of life. Authentic Bastrop is a term that I've recently become familiar with, and I think that it kinda bodes well here. That is authentic Bastrop, these folks here. The code type P five core is defined as the, in the code, as a higher-density mixture of building types that accommodate commercial, retail, offices, row houses, and apartments. It is hi-, it has a tight network of streets with wide sidewalks, steady street tree plantings, and buildings set close to the sidewalks. P five is a highly walkable area. A continuous line of buildings is critical to define public frontage and to allow visible access, activity along the street edge. That's not what we have here. This is property on Highway ninety-five. Nobody's walking there. It is intermingled upon established homes and households in a residential area already. It seems to be that in a heavy-handed, broad, sweeping rezoning, this piece of property was captured because of what was adjacent to it already. It stands at the corner of twenty-one and ninety-five, which is high interest area. In our past, we have seen other businesses come and fail, because regardless of its location and the appeal, it really isn't the best place to establish a business, not only because of the high intensity of traffic, but because of the issue that it will cause for traffic being put on the highway. What hasn't already been said is, aside from that, runoff is an issue also. You know, it's on a hill. All that is gonna deluge not only potentially across the residential areas that are established, but onto the highway as well. Um, the long and short of it is that our family belongs here, and we're asking for your help to help keep us here. We're, we are one of the oldest families in town, and we'd like to remain a forever Bastrop family. We belong here. Business has no business here. That's it.
Thank you very much for your time and all your homework, sir. Next up, Kenneth Williams. Would you come forward, please, sir? State your name and your address for us, please.
Yes, my name's Kenneth Williams. I reside at eleven oh five CP Johnson Lane, and I just wanna give you guys a little history about this land. This land has been in the Johnson family for well over a hundred and fifty years. My wife's grandfather was the original owner of this property. To say we're gonna change it from what it was to something different is not making Bastrop better. In my opinion, it's making Bastrop worse, not just because I live there. The appeal to Bastrop for me when I moved here thirty years ago was the small-town, everybody knows, everybody attitude, and we're losing this by sticking all of these commercial people in here from all over everywhere. Not saying that that's not a good thing, but in this particular area, I don't believe this serves Bastrop at all. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time, sir. And Mona Williams, would you come forward, please? State your name and your address for us, please.
My name is Mona Williams. I also reside at eleven oh five CP Johnson Lane, and that's why it's called CP Johnson Lane, 'cause CP Johnson worked hard for the property that we're trying to save from being rezoned to commercial property. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much for your time. Um, that would make the last five people who spoke all in favor of not only three C, but three D. Um, and then I have some online stuff. Am I supposed to read these?
You don't have to read them. None of them had comments, um, with that one. It's, it was reflected in the prop-, the property notices received, the four in favor.
Could you say that one more time? I'm sorry, I had a hard time hearing you.
Sorry, with that one, you don't have to read those ones out. None of them had comments on them. Them, they were captured with the, the title slide of the four property received in favor. So, you're good.
Outstanding. Would you like me to share these with the public? No? Sounds good.
Those are usual, they're sent to the property owners, um, prior to, so we just have to keep record of, and it's for, more for y'all's reference.
Thank you so much. All right, uh, I'm gonna close the public hearing unless anyone else would like to speak. I'm gonna close the public hearing. Board, do we have any questions?
Do. Uh, Kennedy, on, on the property that's just to the north of that, on this chart here, six-one-two-four-two, is that commercial or is it residential?
The, oh, this doesn't work.
Just up.
Oh, up here?
Right there. Yeah.
I can't remember.
Is that a house?
Residential.
Residential.
It might be P five, but it, it.
We changed that one last year, 'cause it dealt with the cemetery, correct?
That was a little higher.
That one's higher.
It's the next one up?
That's further down. So, that's, that's a house there, residential?
I believe so. I'm not sure the exact, she's checking right now.
Okay, how about the one that's south of it, on the corner there?
That one is commercial, P five.
That's P five.
But it's a vacant lot.
So, P five goes all the way up on Chestnut?
Uh, yes, so, the one of. So, the one north is, uh, P five. It's zoned P five, the use of it, um, is, might be residential, um, so it's in a non-conforming status.
Good. So, is it P, P five or?
So, above it is P five, um, but it's like, like the, they're saying it, it's, it's a residential use, so it's considered non-conforming, um, but it was, it is currently zoned P five.
Okay, and the rest of the step on Chestnut is P five?
Yes.
Now, changing there?
No, the, the only two properties that we're changing, um, are.
Is that one? The one three-six-six-two-five, just to the east of it, is that residential?
I think that one is P five as well, or is that one P four?
On the right, it's, uh, mixed.
It's P four, which is, uh, mixed-use residential commercial.
The three-six-six-two-five?
Three-six-six.
A lot just to the east.
Oh, no. Sorry, no, that one is, uh.
Commercial?
It's commercial, it's commercial.
It's right across from the Dollar General.
I understand that. But what I'm asking about, and the reason I'm asking, is, uh, if you got, you're putting a P, changing P three to, then boxing that P five then, if three-six-six-two-five is P five, is that commercial or is it residential?
I see what you're saying.
Or does it matter? I guess that's one of.
If it is commercial, is it also considered a non-rezoned?
Yeah.
If we could keep your comments remained in the comment section, we can have more comments for item three D. At this point, just questions and answers from the dais to the presenter.
So, I'm confused. So, strike me out.
So, the, the lot we're currently talking, sorry, this one right here, is currently P five.
I understand.
And you said this one is P four or P five?
The one right next to it is P five as well.
So, this one is P five, this one we're not talking about tonight, and then it's the lot next to it that we'll be talking about next. That one is P four. They're trying to downzone that one as well to P three. So, it'll be this U-shaped lot and this one that they're, um, trying to downzone to P
Are there any applications or plans to have that, uh, two-five rezoned currently?
Josh, do you have a question?
No.
Uh, could we talk to our city manager about this one real quick?
Yeah.
Sorry, I missed the question.
It's okay. Um, I guess my question is, uh, let's say we go ahead and approve thirty-three and ninety-seven. What are the implications of leaving two-five? Let's say that, that there currently no plans to have it rezoned, are, could someone go in there and build a commercial building in between two residential lots?
There's nothing on that lot at this time?
It's a vacant lot.
Any of them? Right.
Yep, if it's zoned appropriately, then. So, the issue really is, is for us to go through a, um, a comprehensive review of this area and do a, uh, comprehensive rezoning if it is indeed going to remain a residential area.
Well, if we change this to P three, it's gonna be a residential area, isn't it?
Well, sure, but this only applies, this only applies to the, the lots applying for.
Don't do anything wrong to the, to the neighbor to the, to the site there when we locking them in, is my, is the issue I have. I'd rather see it as a residential area, but are we locking somebody?
And that lot in the middle is not owned by this group? Okay, so you do own the, the property, okay, but that isn't the subject of this particular rezoning, just those two other lots. Okay, so we can bring it back. We can bring it back at the next, um, rezoning meeting.
So, we have the property owners of that property here tonight?
Yes, but it wasn't advertised as such, and so we can't have that item for discussion.
Okay, okay, but they're in agreeance that?
Sure.
Okay.
And we can bring it back at the next, um, P and Z meeting.
So, is the property owner here that owns that property next door to it?
Yes.
One of these sheets?
Will you, will you come up?
You could come up to the.
Yes, will you come up to the mic? Will somebody come up to the mic and, and discuss ownership?
Sir, could you come forward for us, please? Could you state your name and your address for us, please, sir?
Yes, sir, my, my, my name is Jerry Lee Haywood, and I live on seventeen, seventeen, sixteen Spring Street, Bastrop, Texas. And I was just looking right here while they showing that, uh, this is a property run up by midway our house. But when we got financed through the bank, they come survey everything, and, uh, it's, but on this side of our house, we got around about.
This side?
On this side of our house, we got them about eight or nine foot, and it go all the way down from Spring to Form. Then on the side of that, that clay street, it's a street coming right on the side of us. That's what I'm trying to say.
Yes, sir. Sir, do you plan to stay living on that piece of property?
Tell the good Lord, take me away.
Yes, sir.
I hope it be a long time, though.
We hope so too, sir. Thank you very much for your time.
This is three-six-six-two-five? Is that it?
Did everyone understand who the property owners?
Um, I guess my question would be for you, Sylvia. Would it be more appropriate to have them all rezoned at the same time, just for, I guess, since, okay?
Um, not necessarily. If we know we're going to bring it forward, there's no harm in taking tonight's action, and then we will bring the other one at the next meeting.
Yeah, that's, that was my question, just to make sure that we weren't causing any future issues by doing it staggered, okay?
So, I think that a lot of good things to consider here, everyone, is that, um, this is a family who's been in Bastrop for a long time, um, that authentic Bastrop does mean history, it does mean people living here, and it does mean supporting our neighbors. Um, we also have to think about all the ecological impact that this could be if this remained a commercial facility. Uh, Buc-E's is one good example of all this, where their runoff goes all over ninety-five, and there's a huge amount of traffic and traffic accidents in that area. So, all I would say is, please consider all those things when making your decision. Do we have a motion?
Yeah, I have a, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Can we call roll, please?
Uh, yes, David Barrow.
Yes.
Gary Moss.
Yes.
Jordan Scott.
Yes.
Wait.
Yes.
Keith Alborn.
Yes.
Joshua Bingaman.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, that passed unanimously? Unanimously?
Yes, just for reference, whenever everybody's mic is on or more than four mics, it won't allow you to cue another mic, so that was the issue.
Do you wanna call roll on that one, please?
She just did.
You just did? So, we're gonna move forward with the next one. Um, item three D. Conduct a public hearing and consider action on the recommendation for the zoning concept scheme, changing the zoning of two-point-two-zero acres out of building block one-eleven, east of Water Street, located east of Highway ninety-five, within the city of Bastrop, from P four mix to P three residential. Kennedy?
All right, so this is pretty much exactly the same as the last one, except for this one, it currently exists as P four, and they're wanting to downzone it to P three for the exact same reasons. Any questions?
Do I need to open this up for public hearing again?
Yes.
Yes.
We're gonna open this up for public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on this?
I don't think we have any signed up for this one. They were mostly signed up for the first one.
So, they all signed up for both, but they all spoke on the first one, so unless they wanted to speak again.
Would any of our citizens like to add anything to what they said previously? Please, ma'am, come forward. Could you state your name and your address, please?
Uh, this is Carol Reynolds again, at seventeen oh six, seventeen oh eight, and seventeen twelve Farm Street. Um, I just wanted to say, you know, uh, the woman before mentioned a comprehensive review of the area to assess what these zonings were, and I think there's a lot of people in our little section of the neighborhood that were not aware of all these rezoning efforts that came through, and there's a lot of family history to these properties, and I understand where there might be an economic interest on the part of the city to have more commercial properties. I just don't think it's ever gonna be what they're gonna choose for themselves, and it would be nice if there was some effort made to reach out to them so that they don't have to proactively fight for the way that things have always been, so, uh, yeah, just wanna say that. I would be in favor of that.
Thank you very much for your words. Is there anybody else in the public who would like to add anything? Has already signed up for three C. Yeah, but they signed up for both. If not, I'm gonna close the public hearing for three D. Thank you very much.
I have questions.
Yes, sir.
It's the same situation. But the owner of this property that's in the center that understands he's staying P five?
Yes.
Okay. He didn't have a problem with that? Didn't pair that he has a problem with that?
Sorry?
I don't either. You ready to turn the motion?
Is that the one that's in the middle of the horseshoe, six forty-one?
Hmm?
Okay.
Different one.
Three-six-six-four-one?
Yeah. Yeah. The one in the middle of the horseshoe, um.
Is the owner of that property?
They, they didn't, um, that one is their elderly, I think, grandmother's house, and it is, already has a lot of exemptions on it as far as like property taxes, so they didn't wanna touch that one and risk messing anything up with that one.
So, it's, it's.
I think it's P three?
It's P four as well.
It's P four as well, so it's mixed use.
Would rezoning that affect the exemption status of it?
It wouldn't, they just didn't wanna chance anything.
Okay, well, if they're gonna go ahead and do twenty-five, might as well knock out forty-one, too, while we're at it, right?
We can't do it today, like, like, like Ms. Sylvia had said.
Yeah, of course.
Everything has to be notified for.
Um, so, as far as like the comprehensive plan and the rezoning changes, is that stuff that's gonna get done on Saturdays, like we have those workshops, is that gonna be happen in the same style?
Sylvia, gonna come, okay, I was gonna say, for purposes of staying on the agenda, we may wanna postpone that comment.
Um, so, we're going through the comprehensive plan review. You guys will be the first to have a, uh, workshop, and, um, after speaking to some of the board members, Saturdays are very difficult for board members, so we're gonna go to, uh, every two weeks and start at like five-thirty, six o'clock, to be able to continue to move forward.
Okay.
But you guys will be the first to hear the com-plan, and then we take the com-plan out to the public.
Okay, I know, 'cause you guys, uh, out in the audience, y'all were asking about that. Um, that's, like, code changes, zoning, all that good stuff is gonna be talked about through our meetings and whatnot. All that stuff gets announced on Facebook, so highly recommend you guys, um, follow the City of Bastrop Facebook page, if y'all wanna stay connected with what's going on and all the meetings, 'cause there's a lot of important things that we're changing due to the increase in construction and the population growth and all that stuff, so we, we want everyone to be involved and to voice their opinion in those, and, uh, last one we had was, uh, pretty, had a lot of heavy involvement with the citizens that were there, so you guys are, it's almost like y'all are gonna be a part of the, the changes and stuff, so, yeah, if you guys wanna go, y'all, y'all are longtime Bastropians, and, you know, y'all's opinions are really important to us, so it, it means a lot when citizens come out and
On each side of, of this piece of property, is that utilities, miss, there, where there's no property lines?
Um, it's, it's, it's probably, um, uh, undedicated right-of-way. Right-of-way.
Okay, right-of-way. It looks like, it looks like there's a house that did center that line there.
And, so there is, that, that is his own property. It's a horseshoe property with a cutout at the center. That's a separate property.
But on the left-hand side of there, that house on that...
The house crosses the lot lines. The house crosses the lot lines.
Can I speak? Nope. Come up.
Sir, please state your name and your address for us again.
Kenneth Williams, eleven oh five CP Johnson Lane. That house was recently owned by my wife's aunt. My brother-in-law purchased that house. Before the bank would sell that home, they had the property surveyed. Like he was saying, when the property was surveyed, the property line is not down the center of his home. The west property line is about thirty foot to the west. The east property line, looks like it needs to move another thirty foot to the east. That horseshoe that you see there, that's everybody's... that's Granny Ruby's house. That's my wife's motherhouse, ninety-five, ninety-four Sunday. We don't want to do nothing with that house. But I know for a fact that the mistake has been made with the survey. There's no way that house, the property line goes down the middle. We never made the deal with the bank.
Yeah. Are y'all planning on having it surveyed?
Pardon me?
Are you planning on having it surveyed?
Well, the house is still being paid for, so I'm sure the bank has a copy as well as Jerry Lee. The house is not paid for.
So you think that lines that are up there should go all the way over to the...
The lines that are up there, the line on my left is actually the east side of the prop... the west side of the property line. That line needs to move about thirty foot.
So that'd be right up against the other property?
Right against the other property line.
That's why I just thought...
Cool. Thank you very much for your time, sir.
So many islands, you know, that...
We look forward to you guys getting a resolution to this, for sure. Board, do we have any questions for our city planner or our city manager?
I think we have.
All right.
Did he still have... I know he had his hand up.
Sir, would you like to come forward and state your name and your address for us again? Thank you.
Yes, sir. My name is Barry Haywood, and I live on seventeen sixteen Spring Street. And when I... me and my wife bought the house from this guy, he bought it through a Chase Bank, because the family would stay in there if they lost it. And the guy had to survey it. And what the fence was right there, that's where the property line was on both sides, surveying it. Okay, so the wind-up, he owed like eight thousand dollars worth of taxes on the house. So we didn't... me and my wife, we didn't have no money to pay no taxes. So we went to the bank, to Kent. So Kent said, "Yeah," he said, "I find this house for y'all, but I got to get it surveyed." And after Kent sent the survey there, for survey the house on the, what, east side? They put a property line about eight foot on side of our house, go all the way down. So when the guy surveyed it, so he surveyed it wrong. Because when the bank do something, they got to make sure it's right. So he... bank had the survey come out, and they surveyed it into a property line about eight foot from Spring all the way to Farm, go all the way that way to Farm Street. So that's what that part is right there. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time, sir. Do we have any motions?
You do. Motion to approve.
A second.
Can we call roll, please?
Yes. David Barrow.
Yes.
Gary Moss.
Yes.
Jordan Scott.
Yes.
Keith Alborn.
Yes.
And Joshua Bingaman.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the public for coming out and speaking. We're going to invite our chair back.
Thank you, sir. All right, just real quick. Commissioner Scott, thank you for what you said. You took the words right out of my mouth. I hope a lot of residents were hearing that. Maybe we need to do a video clip and send it out so everyone can know and understand and see the new way of things that we are doing around here. So thank you for that. It was well put together, sir. All right. All right. Thank you, sir, for taking care of that. All right, on to item three E. Conduct a public hearing to consider action to recommend approval to adopt the two thousand twenty-five schedule of uniform submittal dates for Platts in accordance to with Bastrop Building Block Code three, section... Building Block B-three Code Section two point three point zero zero four, annual adoption of schedule of uniform submittal dates in the Bastrop Building Block B-three Technical Manual Situation, Section one point two point zero zero two Uniform Submittal Dates as shown in Exhibit A and forward to the October twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four City Council Meeting. Ms. Kennedy?
All right. So this item that we have is an item that we need to do every year. Once House Bill thirty-one sixty-nine was adopted, and it was dubbed the shot clock bill, previously it applied to all Platts and plans, including subdivision and building permits. Now with the amendment from, I believe, thirty-six ninety-nine, it only applies to Platts. So tonight before you, we have the uniform submittal date calendar for Platts. We accept submittals once a month on Monday, and they are processed according to this calendar. Anything bolded and italicized has been moved due to holidays. For example, if the Monday is a holiday, our submittal date is extended to that Tuesday, as well as reflecting the P and Z dates that have changed based on holidays. Thanksgiving and Christmas, we always move P and Z up a week. Here is the calendar for the Platts approved administratively. The only difference with this one is it doesn't have the P and Z dates because they're done at a staff level. The staff-level Platts are amending minors and pre-Platts. The P and Z-level Platts are the preliminary Platts and final Platts. Any questions?
No, sir, go ahead. So it's essentially the same thing, it's not more aggressive. It's still allowing the same amount of time for people. Okay, cool.
Yes, and we do offer a waiver to the House bill requirements. It is a voluntary waiver that lets them submit on any Monday, not just a submittal Monday. The reason we have them do it on Mondays is because it takes a two-week review period, and then we still have to get the reports ready and get everything posted for P and Z.
And is this available to the public?
Yes.
If they need to... okay, where will this be available for the public?
It is on our website, under Development Services. If you go to the Development Services tag, Development Services, Subdivisions, it is on the subdivisions tab. So when they go to look for what applications they need for a subdivision permit, this is where that lives as well. Any other questions?
No, we don't. All right, need to close the public hearing?
Did you open it?
No, I didn't even open it. So I do need to open it, sorry. After we gone through everything, all right, I need to open the public hearing, excuse me. All right.
We have nobody signed up to speak.
All right, it's open? Don't have anyone to say anything? All right, we're going to close it.
You got a motion?
Okay, now we get to go through the motion. A motion and a second?
To approve to send it to the City Council. Second, as written.
Okay. So we... let's run that back one more time. What is your motion, please?
To approve it and send it to the City Council, as written.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Can we call for roll, please?
Yes. Ishmael Harris.
Yes.
David Barrow.
Yes.
Gary Moss.
Yes.
Jordan Scott.
Yes.
Keith Alborn.
Yes.
And Joshua Bingaman.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, on to item three F. Consider and act on a recommendation from the Historic Landmark Commission to begin work again towards becoming a certified local government. Ms. Kennedy? Oh, Sylvia, you're going to do it. All right.
Bringing the big guns, just kidding. You guys, I started presenting in front of P and Z in two thousand and three, so it's been a little bit. Part of the charm of Bastrop, obviously, is its history and our eclecticness as we go through what I'm going to call Old Town, what was previously the Iroodale District and beyond. With the growth, there is serious concern that we're going to lose that. And so the Historic Commission wants to make a move toward a certified local government because that is the only way the city is allowed to regulate aesthetics. And so aesthetics can mean anything from building material types to window sizes to, you know, anything along that aesthetic continuum. What I would ask the Planning Commission is, tonight you have a memo in front of you that talks about some of the pretty important things that are coming our way. I would ask that we hit the pause button on this one for at least the next meeting to let the Planning Commission understand how it all works together. We are a very strong property rights state. However, regulating aesthetics is a pretty big thing in an area. I mean, I come from a city where I had to hold up the correct color of chartreuse to make sure it was the correct color of pink. No vinyl allowed in Padre Island. I mean, there's a whole slew of crazy things. I think the issue is becoming more of being able to tear down things and build many, many things in its place. It's more an issue of how many people are here, more than, you know, what is authentic Bastrop? Because if any of us drives down Main Street or any one of our streets, you're going to have a beautiful historic home, you're going to have a Rambler, you're going to have a cottage. And that's the uniqueness of Bastrop is all of the different housing types. So that is my suggestion to the board, so let's just hit the pause button. We can bring this back in the November timeframe after we've discussed four of the important points that are in the memo that talk about private realm development standards. Our code dives pretty deep. Most codes stop at the public space. Our code dives pretty deep into the private realm, telling you where you can park on your property lot, where you can do certain things on the lot. So I want to make sure that we understand what we're actually dealing with before we take some pretty gargantuan leaps into property rights.
Anyone have anything? We spoke about this at the previous meeting. Could I be reminded? Did we table this? Thank you very much.
You did. The Historic Landmark Commission picked it up at their last meeting, and so as part of the legislative process, their recommendation was to bring it to you.
But did they want to table it as well?
They want to move forward. They want the Planning Commission to recommend certified local government and move it toward City Council.
And you're recommending we table it again?
Just give me one more month to bring back all of the pros and cons and how we can potentially solve some of the concerns without taking such a ginormous step.
Yeah, because I was reading through the packet they gave us. Did everyone get a copy of it already? Yeah, so just save our questions for then.
Gary, you're on the Historic Landmark Commission, right?
Yes, I am.
What do they want to do?
Can we discuss it here? He can.
Sure.
Okay.
It's an issue of let's get all of our bananas all in one bunch before we do it, though.
Can you put the mic a little closer?
So if you close the deal, I guess I'll have a motion.
Oh, he wants to hear what you said. We didn't hear what you said.
Like people in the audience might want to hear you. We can hear you, but...
You can't hear it, so...
I can hear you, but I promise you, somebody out there is saying I can't hear.
Well, if you close the deal, we'll have a motion, right?
Oh, no, he was asking, what did the Historic Landmark... what was the discussion around the Historic Landmark Commission?
They wanted to move forward with this, you know, but it's a situation where we need to have all of our bananas all in one bunch, like you said, to know exactly what we can do on this thing, so needs to table it, yeah.
And you're saying you need a month, but we're going to pretty much meet on this in a couple of weeks, correct?
Correct. So your memo has about six bullet points of items that we're going to discuss. And one of them is parking, and one of them is density. And those are the two biggest drivers that I hear. I mean, the chair and I had a conversation about transportation being the primary quality of life. And transportation means all of the parking that outflows onto the streets, not being able to get onto your street, not having the emergency vehicles being able to get onto the streets. Because the way the code is written today, it says cars are going to go away. And so we need to find multi-modes of transportation. Now, I agree with the multi-modes of transportation. Yes, we need to be able to move people in different ways. We do have some folks who don't have a car. But we're in a semi-urban environment. We're not in a complete urban environment that has mass transportation, where vehicles would go away completely. So some of our parking ratios and some of our parking requirements force on-street parking. And so the complaints I get about, there's too many cars in the street, my driveway's blocked, I can't get through, I can't get that, is a direct result of some of this. And if we don't address it now, as the subdivisions get built out, it's going to get worse. And we need to address the parking ratios. And so that means how many parking spaces should be required on-site, meaning off the street, you need to park them on your property. Couple that with the super other big important one is one of drainage and impervious cover. And you know, I've been telling you, our numbers are very high, seventy percent and eighty percent in some of the districts. That is a lot of lot coverage for a lot of concrete, which means a lot of trees come down. A lot of green space goes away, which means a heating effect. So we really have to take that one into consideration. And then one of the other bigger ones is the amount of additional dwelling units allowed on a lot. Today, it allows two additional dwelling units. So somebody could come in, scrape a house, put up a house, and then put up two ADUs in the back. So you essentially have three. Now, by state law, we're required to allow one. That's good. But you add the additional dwelling unit, you add the accessory units, and then you can understand why that lot coverage becomes important. We stopped doing away with a lot of the green spaces that make Bastrop so unique and allow trees and things to grow, habitat, for example. So those are the three big ones among what I shared with you. And I think those are some of the fear drivers of what's happening with, you know, we have to protect who we are. And undoubtedly, we have to protect who we are. There's a better mechanism for us to do that than having staff determine whether hardy panel siding is really cementitious fiberboard or is it wood? And who gets to determine that, or how much brick coverage needs to be on a, you know, on a facade.
Got anything else?
Yeah. Have you worked in a city that has been a certified local government before?
There are multiple cities who have... me personally, no. There are multiple cities who have pockets of certified local government areas. They have pockets of areas they've delineated, much like the city of Bastrop was trying to go in their distinction of the Iroodale District. That was the intent in the code. We didn't quite get there. And again, I believe, I think everybody can win, and we can protect what we all love.
Okay, so you still need some more time to review what is implicated with the certified local government before either making a recommendation or not?
Correct.
Got a quick question on parking. You're going to be looking and reviewing current residence homes. They have four people, four cars, everybody works. Where are you going to put them?
I'm sorry, say that again. Four people...
Well, you've got a typical residence in any subdivision, and you've got four people, they all work, and they have four different vehicles. You can only put two in a driveway, two in front of the house. But if everybody on the street does that, there isn't going to be enough room for everybody. So how do you choose and regulate?
That's exactly right. So one of the ideas I threw out was a number of parking spaces per bedroom. So I'll just give you an example of what is a standard parking that isn't allowed in our code today. So a normal subdivision, Riverside Grove, for example, that has the parking, that has the garage in the front facade of the house. The garage counts for two parking spaces, and then the pad site right outside the garage counts for an additional two parking spaces. So ostensibly, that house has four parking spaces. Now, we know everybody fills up the garage and nobody parks in the garage, or at least most people don't park in the garage. Those are things we have to consider as we talk about densities. And we have to consider that in the street widths that we plan for. It is no secret, parking is going to spill over. But in our code today, we exacerbate that problem by having zero parking required, and all four of those people park on the street.
When you think you'll be doing this?
We're bringing this to you on the seventeenth, I believe, is my proposal in the... is my proposal in the code. We have... it would have been the week prior, but council has TML. And so I'm sure there are council members who want to attend. So what we will do in advance, I've shared with you the bullets. We will share the actual text in the document that will change, and then we'll just kind of start peeling away the layers. But I tried to hit the highlights in that memo of what I hear constantly of folks telling me what is scary about losing our identity. And with the announcement of X, I mean, Councilmember Foster says she had four homes list quickly when that announcement came out. So couple that announcement with a drop in interest rates and, you know, the investment folks are taking a look. And when we have the lot coverages that we have, the maximum amounts that we have that you can just concrete a lot, no parking requirements, no minimum lot sizes, you begin to see why that is a very appealing environment for investors. And that's not what we want to have happen in our neighborhoods.
You never get them to an HOA meeting. The owners. There's some people in Riverside that own ten, twelve homes.
And they're rental units?
They're rental units, and none of them ever show up at HOA meetings.
All right, thanks, sir. Do we have anything else? All right. Thank you, Ms. Sylvia. All right. On to item...
Do we need a motion?
We need to make a motion, sorry, excuse me.
We need to close, don't you?
Good, close the... thank you. I'm sorry, I'm moving ahead here.
And you need a motion to table.
Make a motion to table.
To make a motion to table it, to the...
November.
I'll second that.
Oh, he's going to put a date on it?
The next regular planning and zoning.
Right, okay, so...
I second that.
All right, motion and a second.
Okay, Ishmael Harris.
Yes.
David Barrow.
Yes.
Gary Moss.
Yes.
Jordan Scott.
Yes.
Keith Alborn.
Yes.
Joshua Bingaman.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, pass unanimously, thank you. All right, on to item four. For A, following... Follow-up on assigning plan and zoning commission member to each other board and commission as a liaison.
Surprise for those of you who weren't here last time. You got assigned to a board. I'm just kidding. Kennedy.
I, I think the only one who's here tonight that wasn't here last time is Ish. Um, so I'm just gonna read the ones that we assigned last time.
Yes, please.
So we've got, um, the construction standard boards as Josh, that will need to change. Um, Josh is stepping down at end of September. Um, so that board is back up for grabs, but we have the Fairview Cemetery Board with Gary, the Bridging Bastrop Board, Keith, the Main Street Advisory Board, David, and the Parks and Rec, Jordan. Sorry. That leaves us with three boards remaining. Um, it's the Bastrop Public Library Board, the Construction Standard Board, and the Cultural Arts Board. So that'll be kind of between, um, you and Pete, Ish, who wants what?
Well, we'll let Pete pick whatever. I kinda was gonna do the DEI or the Bridging Bastrop. Is there somebody on there?
And Keith is on that one.
Who was?
Keith.
Keith, oh, sorry. I'm, I'm, sorry. Uh, whatever works, whatever Pete doesn't take, I'll do what's left.
Does anybody wanna double up on a board? Cause we have the Construction Standards Board as well. That's the one that.
And they don't meet, they rarely meet.
I don't think they've met in like two years. They haven't met for as long as I've been here.
I can stay on that one if that's helpful unless it's someone.
But he would have to, you'd stay out to be on the commission.
Oh, you'd have to be on two, okay. Pass. I don't mind taking Construction Standards.
But you can submit your application to serve on that board.
We do have a vacancy on that board. Um, you said, Jordan, you'll take it?
Yeah, I can take and track him soon as soon as I can.
Um, so Ish, we'll get with Pete, um, between Bastrop Public Library Board and the Cultural Arts Board, and we'll, we'll let y'all know.
I'm, I'm sure, though, she'll probably pick the cultural arts, I think.
The Cultural Arts, Cultural Arts Board meets during the day. They meet midweek around noon.
What time during the day?
Noon.
Ooh, so I don't know if that would work for her. So, I mean.
Would that work for you?
No, but I can make it work, just so that it does. I just need to, it's once a month, right? Okay, yeah, I just need to know the date, and then I can work my schedule around it, just, cause I want this.
And you can always zoom in also.
Right. I just, I just want this to work, so, okay.
Perfect.
All right. Item four B, future development related items.
It continues. Uh, the State of the City is posted on this website, so if you've not seen that, we, I talk about a lot of the development that's coming. And so when we meet on the seventeenth, I will bring an updated map to each of you, um, that I think we're just gonna have to hang up somewhere around here, pull it out every single time that we talk. Because we have speculative development that comes every single week, which means they may or may not develop. And then we have some, some real folks who've already bought the property and are, and are in a hurry to get started, so. You have a, there you go. Okay.
All right. Doc, did you have something?
So this one is for y'all. Individual requests from planning members that other items be listed.
I, I thought he was gonna bring something up after Sylvia when he came up, but we'll go to item four C.
His is four D.
I know, I, I, I know, but I just, he seemed a little ready. I just wanted to make sure we wouldn't skip him. Item four C, individual requests from planning and zoning commissioners that particular items be listed on a future agendas. Please note group discussion. All right.
Awesome.
We'll move to that. We don't have anything. All right. Item four D, reminder of the, uh, for the upcoming boards and commissions banquet on October twenty-four, six thirty PM, and a group photo. So, um, y'all gonna say something, or I can say something?
Somehow my slides got messed up, and I have four E first. I think it's cause I wanted him to go first. Um, so can we come back to four D and get the picture at the end?
Sure.
I'm messing you up now.
No, that's fine. It's been one of those days.
So if you wanna go to four E.
Thank y'all for bearing with me. All right, let's go with four E, um, Development Service Department Monthly Project Volume Report. Hello, Doc.
Harold, good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for having me up here. Typical monthly report. This is for the month of August, which was application date. Still kinda slow, but like Sylvia said, we got a lot of stuff in the, being developed, being worked on, that's gonna be coming forth. Kinda just gave you an overview to kinda give you the big things on the month, the building activity for August. We had a CO for our DeLeon Beauty Institute, which was a little lease space around seventy-one. We have a little Honeybee daycare that took over an existing vacant daycare, one oh two Corporate Drive. A new music shop, which is Blake's Music Shop right here on Loop One Fifty, used to be the Paint Store. Doing a lot of work with the school district inside the city and outside the city. Both the schools on Old Austin Highway are being remodeled or added on to. In August, they applied for addition and a remodel at the one at seven twenty-five, and then it's a small commercial project, was a Wells Fargo little ATM. Any questions on those? Next one. Monthly planning activity.
I have a question, quick. Did you say your things are slowing down?
No, it was slow. We have a lot of stuff that's waiting on utilities, getting through the plating. No, it's not a lot of activity on these months, which is typical. There's a lot of stuff that's waiting on the subdivisions to be accepted, et cetera.
So you're still buried?
So on the planning activity side, the courtyard by Marriott, which y'all are a little familiar with, that's the development by the High CVS we've been working with. It will eventually be another hotel, and this was the site development plan. We've been working with Friendship Bible Baptist Church on a site plan, adding on to their building, redoing their parking lot. And again, we had the remodel of seven twenty-five Old Austin Highway with the school district. And then on your zoning con script schemes, those were those two you dealt with tonight. Any questions? Thank y'all.
Thank you, sir. All right, now we're gonna do four D with the banquet and the, we gotta get the photo tonight. Is that what you're saying? You're just gonna talk about it? We're not in our banquet best, though.
Should've read the agenda.
Surprise.
Um, so this is just a reminder for the upcoming banquet is on Oc- so sorry. It is on October twenty-fourth at six thirty PM. It'll be at the Convention Center. Um, it'll be, for, for those of you who, who were here last year, it's just a dinner and, um, kind of like an appreciation from the city to y'all for serving on these boards and commissions. We need to take a group photo. If, uh, when is, do you know when the next meeting in October will be?
Our October meeting?
The, the special meeting, though.
We can, we can take it on the special meeting if everyone shows up. I mean, we.
So how about we take a photo tonight, just in case, and then hope, like, plan to take another photo at the special meeting in October?
All right, cause I'd like to include Pete.
Yeah, that as well.
So.
So let, 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 let's do that. Does that sound good?
Yes.
All right, so let's gather for a photo.
Okay. All right.
Let's take a motion for adjournment.
Can we take a motion for adjournment, please? I can't do it.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Motion and second. All in favor?
Yeah.
All opposed? All right, thank you, guys.